At this time, we'll go to public participation. There isn't at this time. Let's get down to staff reports with Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Barti. And it's wonderful to see a full house tonight. And it's great to see our students here tonight. And we have a representative from a little bit. We have from the littlest to the largest. It's great. So that's a wonderful thing. Tonight, the first thing that we're going to do is recognize our board members. I tell you, we have seven of the most dynamic, smart. They argue with me. They keep us on our toes. But I tell you, I would not trade them for anything. Hey, because I hear the stories of other places and it's nothing like here. Been with the board for quite a number of years. And as I said, I would not trade them for the world. This year, this year, the theme for our board recognition month is locally elected, community connected. And they are, trust me when I say they're community connected. But I think it's all over the place. But I will say this, that is a good thing because they do know what's going on and we appreciate them for their knowledge. So let's give them a big round of applause. At this time, Ms. Lot, do you want to call up? Or I can do that call up. We have a couple of recognitions and we're going to start with our president, President Barti. If you go to the front, President Barti. And we're going to ask Memorial Ninth Grade Academy and Wheatley School of, yeah, Wheatley School of Early Childhood to come forward.
I think they wish you that.
Okay. Well, we've got to tell them, they might be at your house getting their gifts.
And Ms. Washington at Wheatley Early Childhood. We just want to thank you for all that you do for us. Mr. Barti, you are very active, as Dr. Porter said, in the community and you're also very supportive. We thank you for the trust that you give us every day with the students and everything that you do to make our campus and our district great. We know that you are a Green Bay Packers fan. We do have a little bit of Green Bay Packers in here. My apologies that you all didn't make it further, but as always, next year. Thank you for everything you do.
Cowboys, Cowboys, Cowboys. Texans, Texans, Texans. Not Green Bay, not Green Bay. Great, that's good. Next, we ask, well, next we will ask Secretary Kimberly Johnson to come to the floor. Yeah. And we'll ask Memorial High School Kate and Adams Elementary to come forward.
Secretary Johnson, good evening. On behalf of Memorial High School, Dr. Small, Memorial Kate, Dr. Davis, and myself, Dr. Seestrunk, on behalf of Adams Elementary, we just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for your service and your dedication to our schools, our students, the community. We just want you to know that it's noticed and it's appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Uh-oh, you got some more gifts coming forward. Come on, Cortland. Don't be shy. We know you're not shy, Cortland.
That's what I did.
Yeah. Yeah. That's neat. Another one keeping gifts. That's not hers. All right. That's one thing, and we, in PA ISD, we always have time for family. Family first. Family first all the time. Next, we have trustee Jakari Narcisse. And we're going to ask Port Acres Elementary School and Taro Elementary to come forward.
Yes, trustee Narcisse, we just thank you for your joy that you bring to the community. And we just appreciate all that you do for our children, for our parents. This is an opportunity, we want to say, give you a great big thank you on behalf of Port Acres Elementary, Dr. Jordan, Antero Elementary, Dr. Crochet. Again, thank you for all that you do.
Next on the roster, we have trustee Dr. Johnny Brown. And we asked Lincoln Middle School, Port Arthur Alternative Center, and Wilson Early
Fellow Texans, we're gathered here today. On behalf of Wilson Early College, Lincoln Middle School, and Port Arthur Alternative School, Dr. Brown, we cannot thank you enough for all that you do and that we come bearing gifts because this is probably the least that we could do for all that you do.
Next on the agenda, we have trustee Deborah Ambrose. And we'll ask the Queen Elementary School and Lakeview to come forward.
Good evening. Trustee Ambrose, we thank you for your continued support of learning in Port Arthur ISD for students, faculty, and staff. We appreciate your dedication, your sacrifice, and the many, many long hours down through the years in support of learning in Port Arthur ISD. We appreciate you and thank you. God bless.
We do want to recognize two of our Board of Trustees that are not here with us this evening. Taylor Getwood is out of town and of course, Mr. Kenneth Lofton. And we are in prayer for Mr. Lofton and his family. He, his son passed away this week and so they are trying to get everything together. So our hearts, our prayers, our thoughts, and everything are with him. Jeremiah was a wonderful, wonderful young man. He's a graduate of Memorial High School, always smiling, always laughing, always had a good attitude, just wonderful. Went to school, did everything right, did everything right. And that's who the Lord calls, you know? So we are in prayer. We, I think everyone is still in shock, really, for the passing of Jeremiah, just a wonderful kid. And for those who've never lost a child, we never want to because I cannot even imagine the hurt that they're feeling now. But we do send our prayers and our thoughts and we do have gifts from them, from Kenneth Lofton. I'll ask Jefferson Middle School and Travis to come forward and say a couple of things and we'll take their gifts and we'll make sure that they get, get it, get them.
Good evening. On behalf of Thomas Jefferson Middle School and Travis Elementary, under the leadership of Mr. Taylor, we do have a token of appreciation for Vice President Lofton. We do thank him for his relentless leadership with leading the board as well, and we are certainly keeping him in prayer.
When you talk about community connected, Kenneth Lofton was already dedicating so much to the youth of Port Arthur well before his tenure on the board. And we do appreciate all what they've done and our sympathies and hearts go out with that family.
Absolutely. You can get to Ms. Lot. And for Mr. Taylor Getwood, we have Houston Elementary School and Washington Elementary.
Good evening. On behalf of Washington Elementary and Sam Houston Elementary campuses, we would like to honor trustee Taylor Getwood, thank him for his continued support and efforts in helping us continue to educate students in the Port Arthur Independent School District.
And if I may, I brought a little help to thank our school board members. On behalf of Sam Houston Elementary's teachers, students, and staff, we thank all school board members for their hard work and dedication. Your time and commitment made, make a difference in our community.
Thank you, Gabrielle. And you know, you can't help but be an educator. It's in your blood. I'm sorry. From grandmother, mom, aunt, it's just, we claim you and you can't do anything about that. So we will see you in a classroom one day and moving on up, moving on up. All right. Next, I think we have the Girl Scouts that are with us. So we'll ask the Girl Scouts to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to ask junior Girl Scout Gabrielle to come back and give our presentation.
See there, a Jack, what did I just say? I mean, Jack of all trades.
The Girl Scouts of San Jacinto Council aims to build girls of courage, confidence, and character who strive to make the world a better place. The council has over 38,000 girl members across 26 counties in southeast Texas. In Port Arthur, there are two troops. Troop number 130025 for middle and high school age girls and my troop number 130453 for elementary school age girls. Tonight, we would like to express our gratitude to this board of the Port Arthur Independent School District for their unwavering support for our troops. Your support, your support has made a significant impact and helped our troops shine.
Ms. Narcisse? Oh, thank you. I get one too. Thank you. Yeah. Go to take a picture with them? If you let them come take a picture, once they give everything, so, okay, good.
All troop members, please come forward.
Hey.
That's okay. We can all stand right there. Go stand there and get a picture. You can take a picture.
It's important.
And before everybody leave, before everybody leave, I'd just like the board to give, before everybody leave, I'd like for the board members to have words to thank everybody for coming out. I want to especially thank the Girl Scout, it made it so funny, Ms. Jakira Jazay Davis. I say that right? Jazay?
Jazay.
Jazay Davis. Ms. Davis came up to me, she said, hey, Mayor Barti's son, I'm a big fan of your dads. But I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. This board thanks the principals and the staff and the students because we sit on the desk up here and make demands and approve things for you all to do, but you all are out there in the field making sure everything gets done. And you are the real champs. We should be sitting here applauding you all for what you all do. And even though it's Board Appreciation Day, I, as Board President, appreciate you for what you do with our kids and our community and our staff in here in Port Arthur Independent School District.
Now, you know that's personality, huh? Yes. She's neat. Okay, next on the agenda, for all those wonderful kids that you just talked about, we have to have money in order to teach them. So we've had a rigorous, as we usually do, a rigorous audit from Whitney Penn. And I'm going to have the representative from Whitney Penn, Mrs. Salina Sisneros.
Setis. Setis. Setis.
Yes, we're going to discuss that after this. You're going to help me?
Yes, sure will. Thank you, Dr. Porter.
Okay, and board members, you do have the PowerPoint presentation, the one in color, and then the, the entire.
Yes.
Okay, but everything that's in the PowerPoint is in the.
Correct, correct. Thank you, Dr. Porter, President Barti, and members of the board. Thank you for having me here tonight. And we'll go over the 2023 financial statement and single audit results. We'll start with the audit process. We start with planning in the early spring months. We move into internal controls into the summer months, May, June. After the district closes its books, we come back in the fall. And the dates here really don't apply, but it's as an, as an example, we're here today in January to issue our opinion. But I'm going to go over the internal controls and substantive testing procedures that we go through. But all of this is necessary in order to issue our opinion on the financial statements. The internal controls that we focus on primarily is payroll, just because that makes up the bulk of your expenditures. We move into non-payroll, which would be anything that supplies and materials, equipment, capital outlay. We also test procurement, not only just for state procurement law, but also federal procurement law where applicable. We look at information technology because it does feed into all of your various areas. And then we also perform specific federal tests as it relates to the major programs that we test every year. Then we look at child nutrition revenues. We look at cash receipting controls. And then we do focus on PEMS and average daily attendance. So PEMS is the, the method that districts across the state of Texas report their student and financial data. Then average daily attendance, as you know, feeds into state aid and it is an estimate. We'll see that here in a few slides as well. We have to look at any changes from absent to present that affects state aid. And so that is what our, our tests are focused on so that we can rely on the controls over average daily attendance, which feeds your state aid in addition to property taxes. The substantive procedures are performed after August 31st, 2020, or were performed after August 31st, 2023. We start with a basic flux analysis, meaning what changed from last year and we look at the current year. Then we move on to ratio analysis. Then we perform predictive tests. Predictive tests are, we know the historical collection rate of your property taxes and then we compare that to what you actually collected in the current year to see if it's reasonable. In addition to that, if we can't confirm with third parties, we'll vouch, meaning we'll look at bank, banking records, we'll look at invoices, purchase orders, receipt documentation. The confirmations are for your cash, investments, bonds. And then third party reports are very handy because you operate in the state of Texas. So we can draw down the full TEA payment report that shows everything that TEA paid you throughout the year. The comptrollers report not only just include, not only shows TEA's payments, but also all state agencies across the state of Texas, like the Texas Department of Agriculture. For state aid, we look at the payment ledgers and summary of finances as well, and that helps us tie out that large amount of state aid that you get in the general fund as well as your debt service fund for existing debt allotment. So the purpose of the audit is to issue, excuse me, okay, is to issue an opinion, as we saw earlier, and any, every entity can earn one of these three opinions. And so every entity wants the one on the right, the unmodified or clean opinion. No one wants the qualification or disclaimer because that's a red flag to regulatory agencies. So I'm pleased to report that once again, you've earned, and I say earned because it is a process, the audit is a disruption in your daily operation. So we do thank Ms. Denise Davis and all her staff for helping us get through this audit as early as May, June. We disrupted her flow in her operation, so we thank, thank her for helping us. In addition to generally accepted auditing standards, we have to apply the second layer of auditing standards under generally accepted government auditing standards because you do spend more than $750,000 in federal funds. We have to report on whether you had internal control deficiencies or material weaknesses, which we had, we would have determined that as of the summer months when we did that internal control testing and even compliance findings, which we had none. As far as the federal programs, you spent $36.6 million this year. And we initially thought that we were going to test Medicaid cluster, but at the last minute, we determined that it was Shar's. And so that we were able to remove, but we were, we were ready. We started testing for that. But the two that remained were ESSER and all of its components, ESSER 2, ESSER 3, and child nutrition cluster as well. Those are large programs that have to be audited, but ESSER will continue to be audited even in fiscal year 24, just because the Office of Management and Budget that comes from the White House has deemed it as higher risk for all entities that receive this funding source. And, and so again, because it is higher risk, we have no choice but to audit it. We have to issue an opinion on these major programs. So you have earned an unmodified opinion as well as no internal control findings or compliance findings. Any questions before I move on to the financial highlights?
Questions, trustees, at this point?
Okay. There's two sets of financial statements and you should have received a PDF, but Ms. Davis also has a little black book like this that has all of the information that's presented here. But the Exhibit A1 is the first statement that treats a school district or any governmental entity as if it were a corporation showing all of your long-lived assets and all of your long-term liabilities, whereas when you look at your general fund or debt service fund, you don't see capital assets or your, your debt, long-term debt. So this attempts to show it as a corporation and, and shows the net worth of the district. So your total assets were 424 million, with the bulk of it being capital assets at 278 million and cash and investments at 119 million. The other are total 27 million and it's due from state, prepaid, inventories, et cetera. Total deferred outflows were $32 million and those are related to the net pension and OPEB liabilities as well as the deferred inflows. They go hand in hand and those are given to us by the state of Texas. And I'll go into that here in a bit. As far as your liabilities, they totaled $420 million. Your bonds totaled 345 million. And then you have the net pension and OPEB liabilities at 26 and 17 million dollars respectively. To the left of the slide, I included a little note with double asterisks indicating that this is your proportionate share of the state liability for pension and OPEB. This liability at the state level is actuarially determined by a company called GRS and we have to perform procedures for that. But the way this 26 million and 17 million dollars were determined was your proportionate share. And, and that means your contributions divided by all the members of TRS contributions as well. So it's, it's a fraction of that. So out of that, you get the 27 million dollars. The reason it's notated like this is because it doesn't represent a cash liability. You're not going to have to write a check for these large amounts like you would for an accounts payable or even when you make your, your annual payments on your bonds. I don't want us to worry. So if we were to back out those items alone, 26 and 17 million dollars, you could add that to the $3 million in your net position. And actually, indicator number five, under first ratings, they actually, TEA does that. They add that back because they know it's not a cash liability. It's just information sharing there for that. Now, the general fund revenue is what you're, yes.
What, Ms. Ambrose?
Yes.
Could we go back to the, under the total asset, you, the other, the 20, 27 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me again what that covers?
Yes, so out of the 27 million, 19 million dollars is due from other governments and that's primarily due from state. So that'll include all of your state aid. It'll be all of your grant receivables. So it's, it's items that are due that are revenue, but you didn't receive the cash, but you will, you probably already did in fiscal year 24. So that's 19 million. And then you had accrued interest of 94,000, other receivables of 10,000, inventories of 750,000, prepaid of 188,000. So that'll, and then you have property tax receivable of 7 million. So that's where you get to your 27. And so the property tax receivable is net of any allowance for uncollectibles.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, the general fund revenue is what you're accustomed to seeing and as well as the expenditures and receive monthly reports, budget to actual, and we'll go over that as well. Your general fund revenues totaled $107 million and you see here that the bulk of it, or 56% of your revenues are made up of property taxes, or 60.1 million dollars. Then you have your state aid at 34.5 million dollars. This is your foundation school program and your available school funds that are contingent on your average daily attendance. And that's why we do so much work in that area. You have your state revenue and so that is your recognition of the state's contributions on behalf of your employees. The reason we highlight that, we have to, is because it's recorded as revenue, but what's happening on the expenditure side, there's an offsetting amount. So it's a net effect of zero to your fund balance. But you, as a district, have to recognize what the state is contributing on behalf of your employees. And so it's called an on behalf payment that we have to, to record and recognize. Your federal revenue totaled 6.4 million dollars and the bulk of that is going to be your school health and related services that it's obviously in your general fund and it doesn't go into your, into your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. That alone was 1.5 million dollars. With your ESSER funds, you can claim indirect cost and the, the indirect cost for ESSER 2 and 3 totaled about 3.4 million dollars. And so then you had also the child nutrition cluster, indirect cost included in there as well. And if you're interested in that, that's on page ID1 of the little booklet. And then you have other revenue, which includes investment earnings. This year, investment earnings were much better for all governments across the U.S. where last year, investment earnings were dismal, but they where last year, investment earnings were dismal, but uh they improved uh this year. Your general fund expenditures totaled eighty-eight point seven uh million dollars, where you have fifty-two percent uh for instruction and related services. You have your instructional and school leadership at nine percent. And then the third largest piece of the pie, or the fourth, uh, well, the third is the nineteen percent at facility maintenance and operations. And then you have your student support services, transportation, extracurricular activities are in the light blue uh shaded portion of the pie. When we look at your general fund budget to actual, again, we see what we've, we brought in in revenues. Uh, we know the expenditures. You had total other funding uh sources of three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the change in fund balance was a positive nineteen million dollars. You started the year with fifty-six point four million dollars and then you have your ending fund balance as seventy-five point five million dollars.
That's, that's nice.
Yes. Your child nutrition services, I, I show this because you.
It is, it is. It is.
Oh, yes, it is.
Very healthy.
And and just working with you all in previous years, you know, you have those um, the um, the property tax lawsuits from the plans.
Right.
And so you always have to be prepared. If those happen, come out of the blue and it always bums me out. Because like, you were doing so well and then that happens. But yes, it's always good. E S R is going away too, so you have to be prepared for that as well and what you're gonna do with.
It would still look good.
Once that goes away. Yes, ma'am. Child nutrition services is also important because you do adopt a budget and amend it throughout the year. Uh, the actual amounts uh were six point seven million dollars, where, which were very close to the budgeted amounts, but you did come under budget on the expenditure side by almost four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, you added about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars uh to fund balance, uh ending at one point two million dollars. So in the general fund, you want to be ready for that. But in the, in the child nutrition services, the Texas Department of Agriculture has a different view to where they want you to almost break even and you're almost doing that here um with that because they want you to always reinvest it. So it's a, it's contrary how these two regulatory agencies look at your fund balance. On the debt service fund, remember you levy a tax, not just for maintenance and operations, but also for your principal and interest. So property taxes are, are within that thirty-one point seven million dollars plus a few um um dollars for interest earnings. And then you have your state program revenues, which is made up of your existing debt allotment. Your principal and interest and bond issuance costs can be, you'll see that you're very close um to your budgeted amounts because that comes from your amortization tables that are given to you by your financial advisors. So overall, you added a, a little over, or a little under five hundred thousand dollars. And so you have a total of four point eight million dollars. And so you always have to remember too, that you still have to make these principal and interest payments. You levy your taxes in October, but you don't start collecting them till December. So you have four months where there's no cash coming in or not to the level that you see in December. Required communications, these are the last few slides. Again, we received your, your engagement, our engagement letter from you on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. We sent a letter when we were doing the audit, um September first and we also sent those questionnaires, fraud questionnaires, et cetera. But we also identified two risks that are applicable to any audited entity, not just to Port Arthur I S D. Those included management override and revenue recognition. It's our acknowledgement that that exists for any entity, but it's our job to design procedures to mitigate those risks in our audit and we believe we've done that. Um, we also look at your methodologies, accounting methodologies and make sure it's in accordance with industry standards and they are. Um, we didn't have any disagreements or difficulties. My team loves working with your team, you're very hospitable. Um, and we get the, your team puts in the effort to where they take the, the audit uh very seriously and they know it's important. There's G A S B number ninety-six, which is a new standard that was implemented in fiscal year twenty-three. It is the sister pronouncement to the least standard from last year. Um, and so what, what this aims to do is to report any subscription long-term, not long-term, but it's more than one year, maybe two, three years. If you have uh the right to use a subscription soft, a software under a subscription, you report the right-to-use asset and offset it by a liability. In the past, governments were just disclosing it or maybe not doing anything, right? And so the G A S B, the, the governmental uh accounting standards board said, well, we need to i- identify and recognize these, these right-to-use assets and the offsetting liability, whereas there's little impact to the income statement, but still to let the reader know that you've entered into these agreements. The management representation letter was the last piece of audit evidence that we received indicating that your management has not withheld any information uh from us. We also um send out legal letters to your, your uh, your attorneys that you use and we assess whether there's anything that needs to be reported. We don't believe you've consulted with other auditors. It doesn't mean that you can't have friends at other audit firms, but we, if we get into a disagreement about opinions or financial matters, we'd be required to tell the board that has not happened. Any major issues as far as you asking us about technical items? If, if our response is always going to be backed up by regulatory guidance, if it's a yes, we'll back that up. If it's a no, we'll also back that up. But our, our response is not a condition to our retention as your auditors. And then finally, I, I alluded to this earlier, but there are estimates included in the financial statements and it's state aid, which is a product of your property taxes, average daily attendance. Then the O P E B and pension liabilities are a product of that state-determined liability um and your proportionate share. And then finally, the allowance for doubtful accounts as it relates to property taxes is based on historical collections and it's evaluated every year. Any questions for me?
Questions, trustees, at this time?
Well, I, I just like to say ve- very, very well done. Thank you very much. Uh, we look pretty good from, from my vantage point. So thank you, thank you, Ms. Davis for, for your work. Thank you. Looks good. Very.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we'll have Adrian, Mrs. Lot. Uh, we do have a video on the agenda. We have a group of students that are asking the boys permission for an overnight trip, Y M C A, youth and government. And I think Mrs. Lot will show uh the video or in some parts of it. But uh, it's from Youth and Government, our students made that, made the video. Yeah, well, there's our students, but the Y M C A is sponsoring Youth and Government.
Since nineteen forty-five. Uh, we have a long history of, of this program in engaging teens uh from middle school, junior high, all the way through high school and civic education. Uh, part of this is on that, that basis, the, the notion that democracy must be learned by every generation. And so the Y M C A feels it's important to give kids an opportunity to get involved in civic discussion, discuss policies, discuss practices, discuss those things that, that, that affect their own lives and their own communities.
The Youth and Government program is one of the most impressive and most authentic government programs that we have currently in the state of Texas. I think that it has a huge value proposition to our students and give them real-world, authentic experience of how to actively uh communicate their voice, their beliefs and their passions to their community. I think that's one of the, the biggest things nowadays. Uh, those who communicate well and able to articulate and express their personal convictions about what is true, what is morally right, uh usually have the big influence in our society. And from being a part of Youth and Government program, our kids know what it feels like to be heard and to be valued in a setting that is more bigger than what they usually get to see in their actual classrooms.
The, the great thing about the Youth and Government process is it's a, it's a deeper program than just taking government in school. You know, we learn about the, the, the three rings of the great circus uh when it, when it comes to school and, and government classes. But with Youth and Government, they actually get a practical experience in, in learning how to debate these topics, how to discuss the topics, how to come to consensus, how to win people over. Uh, it, it's, it's really kind of applied civics uh in a, in an environment where they're working with their peers. And, and there are opportunities for the students, not just to present their papers, but also to work as clerks, uh, to work as the timekeepers, to, to actually run the program uh at the different meets. And, and so it, it's, it's a, again, it's a great way for, for not just teaching children about civics, not just teaching the students about how to be involved with the government, but, but also it helps hone their leadership skills, their public speaking skills, uh their ability to relate and work with people of all ages.
I feel like we're good to do Youth and Government as a team because I've known these two for like a very long time and our personalities kind of mixed together, so we work well as a team.
Right, and who better to get better and communicate or build on our communication skills uh with your best friends, so to speak?
Yes, it was very nice working with them and to get their perspectives on things, you know, it's very different. You know, I think in a way, but they think in a different way and it was nice to blend it together.
Some of my takeaways were, were that I was able to find more research about things I did not know and I was able to learn new things.
It was a very new environment and I feel like I pushed myself to a different level, to a point where I could meet new people, learn new things and much more.
For me, seeing my friends do it for the first two years, it kind of intrigued me. And so when I saw the club, I was ready to sign up for it and try it out.
I just realized that it was a very good opportunity. What we do there is just mainly us putting ourselves out there and I thought that would be good for me, my future.
So that's a, a snippet of a seven-minute video um that the media team produced with the students that are advancing to the next round. And that would be consent agenda item number fifteen, um, which will be February first to fourth in Round Rock, Texas. And then for the timeframe from December fifteenth to January twenty-fifth, which is since we last met, this is um the media communications report. We've had uh six observances, including Christmas, New Year's, School Board Appreciation Month, Law Enforcement and Campus Security Appreciation Day, Martin Luther King Holiday and National Holocaust Remembrance Week. Just um to piggyback off of last month, just to show you that our secondary campuses also had Christmas programs. It wasn't just the elementary campuses, but all of our campuses had uh Christmas programs. Thomas Jefferson Middle School has a new active floor technology on the campus. So here are some photos of the children engaging in utilizing that technology. To the right, those groups of student, the group of students that you see um are from Lincoln Fine Arts Academy and they are in the Investigating Careers Course, working on a project called the Ocean Guardian Project. Six of them and five are pictured will represent the school at a conference called Go ComCon in Tampa, Florida this semester. Um, and the video that they submitted uh to qualify to go, the feedback from the organization sponsoring said that kids hit it out of the park. So um the ambassadors that are participating are named there and um they will be representing us very well in Florida. A group of dance students from the ninth grade academy was able to go to Houston over Christmas break to see the Urban Nutcracker. And um one of our Memorial graduates was featured in the production. So the students were able to talk to that, to that young lady, Davon Amalvo, and get to see what happens in the real world when you become an adult, if you pursue a career in professional dance. At the top in the middle, Wilson Early College senior students participated in the Stop the Bleed training. So they were learning techniques for CPR and how to stop the bleed with tourniquets. In the bottom middle, Memorial High School, for the second year in a row, received the A P Computer Science Female Diversity Award for um introducing minority females into computer science and coding. At the top right, our second graders at Lucian Adams wrote letters to Santa that were published in the newspaper. And the bottom right, our terror elementary students, when we returned from winter break, they made little Happy New Year disco balls with fo- foil paper. We had some choir students that competed in the T M E A All-Region Area Competition. And we also had some band students who finished in the top ten of their section in the T M E A Area F Band Auditions. We had two students at the high school who earned five hundred dollar awards from Big Futures by the College Board. And we also had uh C T A, C T E, N J R O T C students, cybersecurity teams who advanced past the state championship into the quarterfinals for nationals. So we are working on a, a video about that. I believe they took the national test last Friday. And so um the senior chief gave them awards for the previous round before they took the test in the next round. Our Wilson Early College is recruiting the next freshman class. So they held informational meetings with eighth grade parents from Lincoln and T J. And the media team also produced a recruitment video to help uh Wilson Early College with their recruitment efforts. Um, in sports, we are in the middle of basketball season for our Lady Titans and our Titans. Softball season just started and soccer season also just started. Our Lady Titans have really been engaging the community in their game nights. They've had middle school night, jersey night, teacher appreciation night, and they've also had alumni night. And so here are some photos from the teacher appreciation night for the Lady Titans. And one of the, I think these are pictures from the Titans versus P and G uh basketball game on the right-hand side. We had a, a family of students who were caught being kind. The oldest child goes to Memorial and the second oldest goes to the Queen. We're not really sure what campuses the, the younger students go to, but they were caught on the Ring Camera of their blind neighbor. They voluntarily go over to assist him with whatever he needs. And you can see at the top picture, the young man is helping him put his tie on for like church on a Sunday. And at the bottom, um, they were letting him know on the Ring Camera video what they can, you know, the, where they live and how he can s- seek their help if he needs help with anything. And the way we found out about this was that the sister of the blind man who lives in Houston, she could see and hear what, what's going on, on the Ring Camera video. So she reached out because she wanted to reward the family because they, nobody asked her to do it and they did this out of the kindness of their heart. So she was able to um get some people to donate some gifts and, and gave the kids gifts over the winter break. We got in touch, the youngest, I mean, the oldest girl plays on the soccer team, so the soccer coach was able to help facilitate that actually happening. Um, the Royalist Social and Civic Club donated bicycles to our weekly students before we left for the break and it made the um Channel Twelve news. At the bottom right, several of our uh high school students and middle school, because um the Port Arthur chapter of Top Teens, you can be thirteen and up. So some of those students are middle school and most of them are high school, but they held their annual Blue and Silver Scholarship Ball. And um a lot of our students placed Mister and Miss Top Teen are students at Wilson. And the first runner-up for Miss Top Teen is um Miss Brady in the Business Office's daughter, Jada. Um, and I think the other two young ladies are in the district who play second and third. But this is a group picture of the kids who participated in that event. We have started engaging the community in the Titan Question of the Week on Thursday nights. And it's just a fun question to get people to sound off in the comments. And this is an example of one of those questions. What was your favorite elementary school P E or recess activity? And as you can see, um, it engaged over six hundred people. It had sixty-three comments, but we've had um other questions of the week that have been even more popular than that one. Uh, the bottom center picture, that's from the Alumni Night from the Lady Titans. The top right, one of our um, she graduated from Port Arthur I S D, but she also taught and was a counselor in Port Arthur I S D as well. She has her own L P C practice and she um offers different free mental health things to the community. And this is the latest one that she's offering, which just happens to be taking place on Saturday. So this is a part of like when we promote other things going on in the community that we feel would benefit our students and families. The topic of this particular workshop is understanding self-injurious behavior because a lot of students started self-harming themselves during COVID and after COVID. And so um the campuses have been sharing this as well to try to help parents, um, give them a free opportunity to learn about this and hopefully help their children if that type of behavior is taking place. The bottom right, we received our basketball trophies for the eighth grade basketball teams for T J and Lincoln Clash of the Titans. Um, Rashante LeBlanc, her family donated the girls' basketball trophy and Jacob and Brown donated the boys' basketball trophy. So every year when Lincoln and T J, eighth graders, play each other, whoever wins will get the trophy and it'll pass back and forth like.
They play it tonight at the high school.
Yes, they, they did move the game to the high school gymnasium. Um, and we've been heavily promoting it to try to get, uh, you know, like a good crowd to go. And um Rashante's family said that she actually was gonna try to come to. And um Rashante's family said that she actually was gonna try to come to the game herself. And here are some other community engagement um advertisements that we had um shared on social media. The Museum of the Gulf Coast is taking submissions for their annual art and photography contest, and a lot of our students participate in that every year. Um, the Lady Titan Soul Spirit shirts. The bottom right uh visual, right now, we have students who have over one hundred pieces of artwork and uh pottery at on display at the Texas Artist Museums, and it will be on display until January twenty ninth. And that story was also covered by the Port Arthur News. We've had a lot of alumni accomplishments since we last met. The first picture on the left, this young lady, Janadia Hunter, is a third generation doctoral recipient in her family. And so we highlighted that because her college did a profile on the fact that she's a third generation uh doctoral recipient. Our Taro Elementary School nurse earned her bachelor's degree. And the two pictures at the bottom, we had um PA ISD alumni who are now high school football coaches, and their teams made it to the state championship in their respective um class. The top left, we found another young man who graduated from Memorial, who was also involved in the Color Purple movie. And so uh we recognized that on our socials. The top middle, one of our alumni who also taught at Lakeview Elementary last year, is now a Beaumont um City of Beaumont police officer. That's her on the right. And then uh Kenneth Lofton Junior is now with the Philadelphia Seventy Sixers. The bottom, Jimmy Johnson received the Ring of Honor. And then the bottom left, Ron Arsenault recently received uh an award from the Chamber of Commerce at their annual banquet, and he is a graduate of Thomas Jefferson and had a his own engineering firm. And then here is our media summary. We did have a couple of crisis communications. Um, due to the weather, we had school closure, and then we had uh some campus closures due to the effects of the weather, which caused us to have low water pressure, but everything is back up and running now. Um, and we also, like Dr. Porter said earlier, we were remembering um Jeremiah Lofton, but we also lost one of our students from Memorial High School, a young man named Joshua Sewell. And that concludes my report.
I would like to thank Mrs. Lot. As you know, she does a magnificent job, her along with her media team, uh, to capture everything that we are doing in Port Arthur, in the in the independent school district. And board, thank you for your support, because we could not do any of those things if we didn't have the board's support. We have some wonderful, wonderful students. We really do. I mean, we have some smart stu-, we have smart students, we have considerate students, we have students that work hard, we have students that play hard, and overall, they're just good kids. And I think we do a good job at trying to help them along. Of course, we're not perfect. By no means are we perfect. But I tell you, we work extremely hard to get everything that our kids need. And sometimes we go overboard in getting them what they need. Because I tell you, other districts do not give everything that we give to our students. We bend over backward. And and we don't mind doing it, because we know they're worth it. Um, from February first through March, Mar- from February first to March first, we will be celebrating African American history. And this year's theme is African Americans and the Arts. So I'm sure you will hear about a lot of singing and dancing and art uh that we're going to do. And as a matter of fact, as she um, Ms. Lot, just after she might have mentioned that, that we have students with, I think, about a hundred uh drawings at Tams. So that went on this month as well, I think, and not not a couple of weeks ago. So we had an art show for our students, so uh and they are very, 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 very creative. So we thank you for all you do, and that concludes our staff reports.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Lot. I just I just had to say something, but that young man that was on the Color Purple, that is my baby brother. That is my brother, yes. So I had to say that, that we're very proud of him. Uh, but thank you, Ms. Lot, for that uh, for your uh staff report. Um, minutes, consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes of the October twelfth, twenty twenty three special meeting, the minutes of the November sixteenth, twenty twenty three, and the minutes of the December fourteenth, twenty twenty three regular board meeting. Have a motion on floor by trustee Ambrose. And second by uh Dr. Brown.
I have a question.
Mr. Narcissus.
Uh, I mean, Ms. Ambrose beat me to the punchline before she, when she made her motion. I was going to ask a question if we was doing this all at the same time, or we was doing each meeting separately.
No, all together.
Okay, so I I have a question in regards to the um November sixteen meeting. You know, because that's the meeting that we had uh postponed the minutes for the amendment. I did look at the amendment, and it's still incorrect. But, you know, I don't want to prolong anything, but if if we may do uh vote on them individually, if you know, if not, it's okay.
Well, I think we did check the um in in Madam Attorney. Did we did check the video and everything with the minutes?
If I can re- if I can recall correctly, um, when he called you to the podium, you said a a motion had needed to be made first for discussion. Dr. Brown is the one who made the motion, so we can discuss that item. Trustee Getwood is the one who seconded the motion for discussion. Directly after you read the resolution, uh, President Barti asked you, did we have to vote on it? You stated, yes. Then tr- President Barti asked Ms. LeBlanc to do a roll call vote. There was no motion to approve. It was only a motion to discuss.
No.
But.
You misunderstood my comments. I said, before you can discuss it, you need a motion on the floor, not a motion to discuss, a motion on the floor. So a motion was made to approve it. It was seconded, and then I read. It was not a motion to discuss.
Okay, well, that's what I saw during the video, but if you all saw something different. I mean, I just want to move past it, but I want to make sure everything is correct, since this is a legal document.
I do I do believe everything is correct. I do believe that we did go back and check. I checked, I think, uh, Dr. Porter checked, and Madam uh Chappelle uh uh Carrier also checked as well. And I think uh everything was correct on the video. That's why we uh proceeded forward with the uh motion and to approve the minutes of that meeting. That's up to Ms. Johnson.
You've already got it.
Okay. Um, to approve those minutes, uh, most could all do it at one time, because it's all, it's one uh part here. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Uh, let the record reflect that the uh minutes does pass. Consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and recurring nature, has been designated consent agenda items by the board president per policy BE local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately, unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the the item's not requested in a separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, give you a minute to do your consent agenda items. Can I get a motion to approve?
Some move for approval.
Consent agenda items number one through seventeen. And that.
Correct.
Okay. I have a uh a motion on floor by trustee Narcissus, second by uh trust trustee Brown. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Let the record reflect that the motion carries personnel, Dr. Porter.
Yes, President Barti, I have given you a list of teachers for approval.
Consider, if appropriate, approve the employment of teachers.
Some.
I have a motion on floor by secretary Johnson.
Second.
Second by trustee Ambrose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Dr. Brown.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that the board rescind its action to propose a three day suspension without pay of a term contract employee.
I have a motion on floor by trustee Brown. Have it as second.
Second.
Second by trustee Narcissus. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Dr. Brown.
I have another motion. I move that the board approve the superintendent's contractors presented in executive session.
Second.
I have a motion on floor by trustee Brown, second by trustee Ambrose. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Let the ref- reflect that we the motion carries. Information, Dr. Porter.
The average daily enrollment, eighty one, eight thousand one hundred fifty one, average daily attendance, eighty nine point eighty three percent.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. At this time, we would like to, once again, I would like to express my deepest uh condolences to the Lofton family, to uh one of our own uh social workers, Mrs. Marla Welch, and her family. Uh, this and and our students family, Mr. Sewell's family, uh, on their loss. Um, we 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 hate to lose one loved one. Uh, just let them know that we are there for them, we are praying for them. And uh, one thing I do know, that God will get them through this time of bereavement. Uh, thank you, and we call for adjournment at seven thirty one P M.
Some.
I have a motion on floor by trustee Narcissus, second by Dr. Brown. All in favor, say aye. Aye, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.